Okay, I am calling the meeting to order this Tuesday, November the 12th. The Currituck County Planning Board Meeting. At this time, I'm going to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to ask for any disqualifications on the one case that we have in front of us today or this evening. Okay, hearing none. We do have a quorum, and at this time, I'm going to move for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Now, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Motion passes. Okay. Item number five, approval of the minutes from our October the 14th meeting. At this time, if everyone's had a chance to look at the minutes, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Okay, moving to old business. This is a discussion on Planning Board 24-22, Currituck County Text Amendment Discussion, and it is related to the evidentiary hearing procedures. So, we will hear from staff at this time.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the, our prior Planning Board meeting, we discussed changes to the ordinance with respect to evidentiary hearings and how the public may participate in those evidentiary hearings. And the board wanted to see notification of adjacent property owners and, and provide those property owners with the information related to how they can participate in the hearing earlier in the process was, was what was requested. I'm just gonna, I think Gary and Tom, you guys weren't here for that, is that right?
That's right.
Okay. Were you able to look at the agenda packet and, and see the minutes? Okay. So, there's a couple of options here. This is the brochure that we talked about at the last meeting, and we talked about updating this brochure with any language that's adopted. So, it reflects the language of the ordinance, non-party witness, specific language of, of the change that's being proposed. But what I wanted to talk about was how that notice, or an option for how that notice could be given, given sooner in the process. And there's a couple of options that staff feels like might be viable options. One is for any special use permit or any hearing that require, any application that requires an evidentiary hearing, the applicant's required to hold a community meeting. And with that, they're required to send a letter to all of the property owners within a certain radius, it's within 500 feet of the property. And you can see here, to your, to your right, there's the language in the ordinance regarding the notice content that they have to include in that notification. And so, those notices have to identify the date, time, and place of the meeting and applicant contact information. One consideration could be to amend that notice content requirement that for evidentiary hearings, it provides specific language related to the way in which the board's going to make decisions on evidentiary hearings and who can participate, possibly even include a link to the brochure that we're going to update based on the text amendment cha-changes. That would be a way to go ahead and get that information out as soon as possible in the process. Additionally, you can see here that the staff is required to attend those community meetings for the purpose of advising attendees on the provisions of the ordinance. Staff can have those brochures available at those community meetings. I'm not sure that's something we, we would codify here, that the staff brings the brochures, but it's certainly something we can do to, to help folks kind of understand how they can participate in the process when the subject, then the application's subject to an evidentiary hearing. So, those were just a couple of thoughts. I know at the prior meeting, we talked about, once an application comes in and we have a complete application, we would send the notice. And it's something that we probably could do, but I'm concerned about changing the process for us for certain, you know, that's not a typical thing, that we have a complete application and let's send notification. And then, the notifications we send aren't going to be for a date specific, because at that point, we're not going to know which meeting it's going to go to. So, it felt like that may not be the best approach, but to get the information out as early as possible, we could, and I did speak to Mr. Bissell, who does a lot of community meetings and does the, sends the letters, and he was open to the idea of having maybe just a form letter that we prepare some language that they would use for their community meeting notices and linking to the brochure, possibly including the brochure with their applications. So, that was just a thought that I wanted to bring to you before we brought some ordinance language back to you to see what the board thought about those options.
Usually, the community meeting is before TRC usually, right?
It is.
So, that is, I mean, you can't get any more notification than that.
Right.
I mean, I believe that that would be fair.
Okay.
I do think we need a little more education for the community, and I actually had some ideas that, you know, we could certainly consider is the quarterly magazine that goes out.
The focus?
The focus on Currituck.
Sure.
That might be something that, again, gives people the opportunity to understand what that means and possibly a link to the website, on the website, just, you know, for people to understand what that means. And, I mean, other than that, I mean, that's, that's the education in the process that I was looking for.
Okay.
To help, you know, kind of keep, keep the community involved in understanding. And also, I think it helps the commissioners too, because the citizen's going to have more education and know that they just can't get up there and just, you know, complain.
Right.
You know?
Okay, great. All right, well, that, that sounds like we're kind of in agreement that we can add some more information in the community meeting notice, have staff have some more information at the community meeting and try to get the education on the front end.
Mm-hmm. Now, will the flyer go out in any mailing at all?
Um, I'm not sure. The, the link to it will.
Okay.
And we can talk about whether it will go with our mailings, our, once, like, with the hearing scheduled, whether it would go with those mailings or the link to it would go.
Yeah, I, I honestly believe that this is a great opportunity to give the adjacent property owners the notification to understand that process.
Okay.
I like it.
Great.
Evidentiary hearings, they can be, can they be continued?
Yes.
They can be, okay.
Yes.
So, there's, there's still that on the table if.
Correct.
An attorney isn't present, or they couldn't line up an attorney, or an expert witness, or anything, it can be continued.
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Just one, one point on that. The person sharing the meet, the evidentiary hearing would be the one that would decide whether it can be continued or not.
Oh, so, okay. So, it's actually done that way?
Be at the discretion of the board, yes.
Okay, okay.
But they have, in the past, continued evidentiary hearings for the applicant to provide additional information where they felt like they didn't get enough testimony for, for certain findings of fact-related special use permit. So, it has been done.
Okay, okay. That makes sense. Okay, any, any more? Okay. Thanks, Jenny. Moving on to new business.
Thank you.
Okay, only item on, under new business, Planning Board 2424, Walton and Ginger Morris, request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 4, Use Standards, to amend the retail sales from a vehicle standards, as well as the general standards for temporary uses and structures. And at this time, we'll hear from staff.
Thank you. So, the ordinance lays out accessory use standards related to how retail sales from a vehicle may occur as accessory to a principal use. And a couple of years ago, there was some cha, there were some changes made. Number seven here was added, because there was question about whether the vehicle had to be owned by the operator of the, the business, and that was cleaned up at that time. And the Morises have sponsored this text amendment, and, and really what it does, it does two things. One, there's a provision two here that you can see where it requires the vehicle and any other appurtenances are removed each day after the completion of sales. That's how that reads currently. And the proposed text amendment is to exclude vehicles that are located on a parcel with a compliant farmer's market as the principal use, provided the vehicle is road-ready for driving or towing off-site, and it's not obstructed by any permanent features. So, in other words, it can't be boxed in and made to be a building, but as long as it can be moved on and off-site, that it would not have to be removed each day. And then, number three here is proposed to be removed, that no permanent features are included as part of the use. There's occasions where there, I believe there's a counter at the, at the Morris site, there's a counter where the, the food trucks might use an existing counter to, like, assist with the way they're doing business. And that in and of itself, that permanent feature, isn't really a use necessarily, and as long as the food trucks or the retail trucks are complying with the standards of the ordinance, it, it didn't seem that that was, needed to be a requirement of, of how you could have this accessory use with an existing business. So, that's that provision. And then, further, there are these standards that are related to, and really, the intent here was for special events. There's some general standards for temporary uses and structures that basically say that all temporary uses, structures for special events shall comply with the following standards. And so, this particular text amendment is to remove the, the one here, number E, or letter E, where it says not include permanent alterations to the site. There are some instances where you may see some sort of accessory structure, or some sort of structure, or fence, or something like that, that maybe serves a dual purpose, or that it's not necessarily establishing a use, like, building a structure doesn't necessarily establish a use, it's a structure that's permitted. And so, and I'll let Mr. Morris speak to why he wants this particular provision removed, but staff, we couldn't see, as long as the structure meets the ordinance setbacks and building code and things like that, and doesn't in it, in and of itself, really establish a use, we didn't feel like it was something that would be problematic to remove that particular provision of the, the ordinance. So, those are the two changes proposed. Staff does feel like there's some land use plan policies that are specifically geared towards promoting agriculture and agriculture-related uses. You can see there's some land use goals here that the board should carefully consider design and location of intensive and potentially incompatible land uses, support new and existing commercial developments that adhere to quality, community experience, and design standards. That's land use goal three. Then, there's a couple economic development goals. Number two, to promote sustainable tourism that improves quality of life for residents and preserves the natural and cultural resources of the county so that they may continue to attract visitors to the area. Economic Development Goal Three, increase value-added agriculture throughout the county and expand agritourism. Policy 3.1, support the continued operation of farm stands and farmer's markets and encourage the sale of local value-added products. And then, you can see in the implementation matrix of the ordinance, there's a provision here that may, may, you know, may apply to the request. You could interpret that it may apply to requests to review the ordinance, to amend, and amend it to allow compatible farm-to-table restaurants, farm stands, and markets, and agritourism enterprises, and appropriate zoning districts. And you're very familiar with these text amendment review standards that you may consider in determining whether to approve, recommend approval or denial. And the staff recommends approval because the request is consistent with the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, including the land use goals and economic development goals and policy I just read. And I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time. I'm going to go back to the, to the language here for you.
All right, any questions for staff?
It's pretty cut and dry.
Okay, hearing none. Is there anyone that signed up to speak? Yes. Yes, come on up and state your name and address.
Evening again. I'm Chet Morris, 106 Morris Landing Lane, here to represent myself and my, my mother and, and father, Ginger. She was sick, so she sent me by myself. I brought my sidekick, my Uncle Louis, he's got Coin Jock Catering Company. Pretty much what we're looking at with the retail trucks, it's, it's pretty cut and dry, but the reason we're trying to do this is mainly a safety issue that we're running into. And he can also say something more on that, but the biggest reason is weekends are big time. And so, basically, we open, we open at like 6:00 a.m., and for a food truck to get there, get prepped out, they're normally getting there like 10, 11 o'clock. And pretty much the biggest thing is customers coming in and out, and then the, you know, trying not to run over customers. And, sorry, I left all my notes at home. The fuel, the fuel issue that we have is you can't hook and unhook a propane tank legally, which a food truck has about 100, 100-gallon tank, and you can't undo it and redo it legally. And Blossom Gas Company, they are the only ones in town doing it, and they serve bi-weekly now. So, pretty much, we have to run off of a big 200-gallon tank, and they will not back us if we hook it and unhook it. So, the biggest thing with that is, once we do that, we're running into a lot of gas leaks when we're dealing with it, because we're not qualified to hook and unhook, and the more you do that, the more issues you run into with the plumbing parts of it. So, on that, that's pretty much the main reason, and, and if they can't, if they can't stay on-site, they don't have enough food on-site to basically have to leave every, every night. So, they would have, I'd have to get other food trucks in, might be out of state to be as qualified as what I think they are for their, the quality of food and everything that they have. Being able to come on and off-site, pretty much, for me, and I'll have him explain more on the, on the fuel-related issue, but on my liability part, is mostly safety. Like I say, it's, it's the fuel and the permanent features, like she said, the desk and tables that we serve off of, it doesn't matter if it's a food truck, somebody selling jewelry, anything of a mobile, a mobile thing, like, I have a permanent thing that looks good versus they bring an eight-foot table, they pop out, it's got some signs that we don't approve of. You know, we want it to be our standards that they serve off of, so it looks farm and rustic, and not just like a flea market-type thing. So, no matter if it's his truck, somebody else's truck, or just, you know, anybody that comes in there with something that's not suitable, that we like, we like to be in control of, being able to keep things clean and how, and the way they look. You want to speak on the fuel issue, or?
I'll be glad to.
Okay. So, that's my part of that, and then I can come back up and talk about the rest of it.
Okay.
I'm not signed up to speak, ma'am.
Ma'am, you can come forward, just give us your name and address.
Louis Davis, and I live at 321 Waterlilla Road, Coin Jock, North Carolina. I operate Coin Jock Catering Company. I operate out of Morris Farm Markets, as well as everywhere else that anybody will have us. One of the biggest reasons that we're really looking to be able to keep these vehicles there, I want to say permanently, I mean somehow permanently, they're road-ready, ready to go. On any average weekend at Morris Farm Market, at 8:00 to 9:00 o'clock, when we would get there, there are people everywhere. There are kids running around, backing the trucks in, getting them in place, moving the vehicles around, is definitely challenging at best. We did it a lot. The other thing is, he did mention the gas. Blossom is our gas provider, they're the only ones that are consistent enough to be able to keep us from running out of gas. They do not like to use the 110-pound tanks that we have on the vehicles, they have multiple connections, they want us to use a larger tank. And again, they can only service bi-weekly. That's a staffing issue that they have, and I think we all realize that there are staffing issues. To unhook from that tank is not difficult, but it becomes dangerous, because you have to check for gas leaks after each connection, reconnection, and the more, just like Chet said, the more you mess with something, the more likely you are to screw it up. And, I mean, those are really the main reasons, by far. He stated a lot of other reasons, which me and him have discussed these, but we would just love to, you know, have the staff think about, you know, some of that stuff. This is, it's, it's mostly safety-related, you know, for the most part. And that goes with other farm markets that I see that have trucks in and out of there as well. He did bring up one thing, that if, if we had to move the trucks every single day, there are certain days that we would probably not go through the hassle of the reconnection of the gas and everything, so he's going to have to find other trucks, which is fine. However, there's only but so many trucks that really operate in and out of this county, so you're going to be pulling from other areas, maybe out of state and stuff like that. And of course, we're all about trying to keep everything local.
Yeah.
As best we can. So, I appreciate your time.
Yep. Any que, hold on, any questions at all from the board? Okay.
Thanks very much.
I think one thing we, what he brought up about local, that, that's important, because Coin Jock is registered to collect sales tax in Currituck County.
Absolutely.
And when that food truck is at Morris, those sales go to Currituck County. Other food trucks that they may get come from there, if they come from their county or from Virginia or Points West, a lot of times, their registration is going to be that locality. And I know there's been some discussion on that, back and forth, kind of in the background, but that's something, you know, we, we're not a taxing authority up here, but that's something this board needs to understand, that, you know, that revenue, sales made in Currituck is Currituck sales tax.
And the people we employ.
Yeah.
All of them live in Currituck.
Currituck. So, so, I'm hearing what you're saying, and, and I just wanted to throw that in there, because that is something, you keep, you keep the, the vehicles are, you know, on-site, Coin Jock or any other place that they.
They, they count their taxes as well, and that's a pretty, pretty, pretty large number.
Because I know there's been some discussion of some of these food trucks and other retail trucks coming from outside of the county, whether it's for an art show or, or something down in Corolla, and a lot of times, the sales tax, the sales tax revenue that they collect, if they're not registered in Currituck County as a dealer, I don't believe Currituck County gets the sales tax on that. Just my two cents worth on that. Okay, you said you were going to come up and talk to us again?
About the next, our agenda on that. Is that now, is that?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, come on. All right, so that was on the, the part about removing the wordage about not being able to basically have anything, permanent structure for the special events. So, what she means by that, with our temporary permit, we're having to make everything 100% mobile, on wheels, tents. We've got, we've got the special events moved from four to 10, and with having 10 special events, like, I can't even build like a little ticket booth or a parking booth. I know y'all see how Dennis Anderson's got his stuff down the way, which is grandfathered in, that's no longer a special use permit, I guess is not allowed anymore, or.
He has a special use permit for outdoor recreation that was issued at the time he began operation, yes.
Okay. So, basically, you know, as long as what I'm trying to do meets building codes and whatnot, I'm just trying to be able to build any little thing. Lighting is on there, like, I can't put any kind of permanent lighting, which, in the middle of a field, in the middle of the farmer's market, if you've been there to any of our concerts, we're adding more and more temporary lights. I've got lights going on on old reefer trucks that we hook up the generators, you know, I just, there's, technically, you could get away and get around some wordage to where you can put lights up for the parking lot for the agriculture business, but if I wanted it in the back four, where I'm having my special events on our back 40, if I say it's for the, the patrons back there, then it's for my special event, and I'm not allowed to have it. So, it's just, it's basic little stuff, anything, you know, for the most part, especially if you're going to take the time to build something and spend the money on a structure, you're going to be doing it, you know, eight, five to 10 times, and the most people that are going to be doing that are businesses. It's not like somebody in a residential spot, I wouldn't think they can have a temporary permit, but that might just be for a wedding or something, they get a permit for, but somebody that's going to do, you know, up to 10 permits that were allowed is, is going to be a business, so all this permanent stuff is going to be on a business property. So, it's not, in my mind, galling up the county with, you know, what, you don't want somebody doing an HOA and all these other different things that would kind of go to that, but just like if I wanted, just a little, just a little building to put t-shirts, like merchandise, that's for back there, parking radios, vests, if I say what I'm building, if I say it's for that, I'm not allowed to do it. And, you know, I can, I can put a goat in there, you know, 360 days out of the year, and it's an agriculture thing. So, I'm just trying, trying not to have to go through so many loopholes to, to get something for a special event.
Yeah.
It's just basic little, just basic little buildings that, that is approved by the county. So, any questions on that part?
Any questions for the applicant? Makes sense. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, any discussion between the board members? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to open the floor for a motion.
Okay, three for three. I move to approve PB 2424, Walton and Ginger Morris Text Amendment, because the request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, including land use goal two and three, economic development goals two, three, and economic development policy 3.1.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Motion passes.
Um, I don't think so.
Okay, well, I'm going to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Wait, I just got a moment, this is not on the agenda, but it was, and it's along the same lines as what we've been discussing this evening. I traveled the length of the county again at the weekend, and I was somewhat dismayed by the number of farm stands. Morises have taken this to a whole new level. They are really great, I admire what they've done, and they, they are really to be commended. But the point I was going to make was that, running the length of the county, there are some farm markets, quote-unquote, which are no longer used and have fallen into some dreadful disrepair, and which are eyesores at the very best. You know, there's one which apparently breeds school buses. There is one down this side of, of Grandy, where the signs are just left hanging on the, on the stand, and so on and so forth. I wonder perhaps if there's a, a means by which these can be looked into and told to clean up the mess, if they don't intend to use them for farm markets any longer.
That's, that's a question for Jenny.
Good point.
Yeah, yeah.
That is a good idea, though. Without using it, loses.
Would that be code enforcement?
Yeah, it would be code enforcement.
Okay, okay. So there's things on the books to deal with that.
Okay.
All right, so as I said, I'm gonna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Me too.
Getting here before you know it. As soon as people skip now, it goes from Halloween to Christmas. I've noticed that this year. There's no, there's no in-between. I used to keep the pumpkins out till Thanksgiving, but they don't do that anymore. So at this time, I'm gonna make a motion for an adjournment.
So move.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned.